Roll call, please.
Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Long?
Here. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is Presentations and Proclamations, Human Rights Awareness Month. Is there someone here to accept this tonight? Is someone, are you raising your hand? No? Is there no one here? Okay, well, it's like two pages, and I'm not going to read it if there's not even anyone here to accept it. So, moving on, introduction of our new police officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be up here tonight to introduce our newest police officer to the Fortuna Police Department. His name is Silas Grigsby, and he was hired on November 25th, 2019. He's married to Christina, and he formerly came from Ferndale PD, and before that, he worked at Costco. He graduated, and we're not going to hold this against him, from McKinleyville High School in 2006. And he's a graduate of the 117th Basic Law Enforcement Academy at College of the Redwoods. And in his off time, he likes to go fishing and ride motorcycles. So, I'm going to introduce Officer Silas Grigsby, 5B-65.
Nice meeting everybody. I'd like to thank the Fortuna Police Department, Chief Doperstein, for giving me the opportunity to serve the community here. I look forward to it. So, thank you, guys.
Welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a new park maintenance worker. Cameron?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Wanted to introduce Eric Gallegos to the team. He's been with us now for a couple of weeks. Been a great addition to the Parks Crew. Eric is a recent graduate of Humboldt State University. Got his degree in Business Administration. Also worked at the HSU Greenhouse and managed the HSU Greenhouse, so definitely has a green thumb that will come in handy, that we will definitely utilize. Also has a lot of experience working on farms and ranches as ranch hands and farm hands. So, worked with heavy equipment, has even done some pesticide applications, so a lot of carryover into what we already do in the parks. So, so far, he's been a great addition to the team, and just wanted to introduce Eric Gallegos as the new Parks, too.
Hello. Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity that I have to work with the Parks and the opportunity to serve my community and be an asset to the park system. Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks. All right, some new employees to make part of our team is always exciting. So, moving on to oral comments from the public. If you have any, if you want to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, you have three minutes, and you can come up to the podium, please.
Can you do this? Hello.
There you go.
I'm Liv Barker, and I am a recruiter for the U.S. Census 2020. Here in Humboldt County, there are just two of us, so we have a big job. We have to hire over a thousand people to work Humboldt. And first, I wanted to talk about the Census in general. It's mandated by the Constitution, and it is conducted every 10 years and counts everyone in America once and only once, and in the right place. It's essentially a snapshot of the nation at one time. The reason this data is so important is that it's utilized for funding infrastructure like roads you drive your kids to school on, and community service, and fire districts, parks, free lunch programs in school, health clinics, Medicare, et cetera. And there's $675 billion mandated by the federal government, and it's distributed based on census data. That's why it's so important to make sure that we get the correct count here. Also, there is representation in government. There are hundred, excuse me, I mean, 435 seats, and that is determined how much representation we get in Humboldt County. This is, to achieve this, we're hiring many people here in Fortuna and throughout Humboldt, but I'd like to hire more in Fortuna. It's to help us to complete the count. The pay starts at $18 an hour, plus mileage, and the jobs are primarily part-time, temporary, and quite flexible. You can work them around a regular job. The qualifications are 18 years old, U.S. citizen, and transportation. And it's important to apply now, so they go down the list, when they do the phone list, to call for the jobs, depending on when you apply. The applications are online at 2020census.gov/jobs, or you can just Google "Census Jobs." It'll come up. Or you can call for assistance if you don't have a computer, 855-JOB-2020. And we would love to have your cooperation and involvement. I was lucky enough to talk to Mr. Perry earlier today, and he's offered a lot of assistance. So, if there's any other assistance you can offer, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. My name's Johnny Rush, and I'm here on behalf of the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission. And I believe, yeah, I'm supposed to talk now, right? Okay. I just wanted to introduce myself and tell you about a new proclamation that we've decided to take on. The whole idea of it is to combat hate speech, whether it be online, or, you know, schools, or just in general. I think that it's much more prevalent than it used to be. And so, we've started a campaign. We didn't want to use the word "hate" in the title, so we're calling it "The Kindness," the Kindness Campaign. And December is Human Rights Awareness Month, so we're starting it now, but it's, we're hoping that to make it a year-long endeavor, and maybe have monthly events or competitions or something. And it's still up in the air. We haven't really ironed out all those details, but it's a good plan. So, I believe you've been sent, do you have a copy of the proclamation?
I have one that I was going to read, but there was no one here to accept it, so I passed on it. So, if you want me to do that now, I can.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
All right.
Okay, so, "In recognition of the Human Rights Awareness Month, December 2019, whereas the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in December 1948, this marked the first attempt in human history to set down the minimum rights every person should enjoy. And whereas in 2019, public awareness has developed a lack of civility among groups of people and individuals in their ability to discuss without anger or fear topics of the day. And whereas our citizens strive to uphold and defend the right of free speech, and whereas speech, whether free or inhibited, is now strained by intolerant adversaries and from a multitude of pressures, including but not limited to statements by family members, public officials, on social media and in schools. Whereas anger and hatred can go unchallenged in our daily lives and in our schools, which leads to bullying and fear-provoking actions. And whereas the general public participates in retaliatory actions of hate and vile speech because they see no alternative. Be it recognized that ultimately hate speech, intolerant language, bias, and discrimination has led to actions which are physically violent, emotionally intimidating, and in some cases lead to physical harm. Such a transformation within our culture will further erode the peace and tranquility of what our citizens expect and deserve, leading to a more violent community, ending in harm to our citizens, young and old. Be it further recognized that while the cities of Humboldt County represent a small, mostly rural population center within the framework of our country, we must all act in ways, big and small, to change the climate within our control. Therefore, be it resolved that in December 2019, individuals, groups of people, agencies, departments, elected officials, and public servants choose a different path, a path that acknowledges peace, harmony, and human rights for all. In so doing, we vow to oppose hate at all levels possible during the year 2020. Human rights and freedom from fear must exist for all people, or they exist for no one. Be it proclaimed that in the service of this proclamation, Human Rights Awareness Month will be the beginning of a continuing effort throughout the coming year, the Humboldt Kindness Campaign. During this time, we advocate for special civic engagement to occur, personal reflection to take place, efforts to educate the public, and a community effort to use kindness instead of hate regardless of personal perceptions and political views. Now therefore, I, Sue Long, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, hereby proclaim December 2019 as Human Rights Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to educate themselves about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the privileges we enjoy in a free society."
Okay, so that, that's a lot, I know, but it's not really, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be anything. Anyway, so on behalf, oh, thank you. On behalf of the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission, I wish to thank the City of Fortuna for recognizing the importance of human rights in our local communities. The Human Rights Commission has been serving Humboldt County citizens since 1965. We were born of the Civil Rights Era and defend a long list of rights some of us may take for granted: equality, freedom from discrimination, the right to life and liberty, freedom from slavery, property rights, education, and many more. This past year, we have addressed issues like human trafficking, homelessness, civil rights and diversity. In 2020, we will be launching a Humboldt Kindness Campaign to battle hate speech, cultural and racial disparities, and cyberbullying, as well help remind our community of its good heart. We would request an opportunity to present to you this campaign in January 2020. You will soon have an email in your box requesting a date, the first part of January. We appreciate the opportunity. The Commission is always searching for new members and new energy to move the rights of our citizens forward. If you are or know someone who might be interested in serving with us, please contact your supervisor. Your service will be much appreciated. Thank you, Fortuna, for recognizing December as Human Rights Awareness Month. So, that pretty much says it all, and if you have any questions that you'd like to ask me, I'd be happy to answer anything, or...
Any questions? All right, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me, and we'll see you in January. All right, thank you.
Our next item is a consent calendar, which includes City Council minutes and our department reports, including administrative, community development, finance, Parks and Rec, police, Public Works, River Lodge, report of disbursements, and consider approving the amended part-time pay rate and classification schedule. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I'd like to pull number four.
Anyone else? All right, Dean, number four, what do you got?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. For many years, there's been a great deal of criticism. It occurs in all cities because of businesses that are trying to make a living, that sometimes there's alternate choices of purchasing items from other sources. Well, since the advent of Al Gore's internet, we've had multiple choices of being able to buy merchandise that's not available in our town. Over the last 10 years, not capturing any sales tax from purchases has been pretty much of a talking point and an effort to try to resolve that, so towns of origin where a person is ordering it over the internet, that actually they receive sales tax, transaction users' tax. Well, I would like to acknowledge to all the people, you're already fully aware that when you're buying things on the internet, that immediately at the bottom of the transaction total, there's sales tax. If it's a big enough sales site, let's use Amazon or Walmart, you don't get to escape that. And so, the gauntlet of freedom has been closing in on all the users of the internet, and I'm just as guilty as anybody else. It doesn't go into a black hole. If it's a large enough site, they are legally bound to return that to the ZIP code origin. So, for the City of Fortuna, I actually could actually say, and I don't think I'm really too off on that, we have received an estimated $160,000 of sales tax that unbeknownst, you know, in the past disappeared. We are actually receiving that. So, people of critics that look at the internet as being a horrible choice actually is a benefit for us in a fiduciary manner. And I think that it will continue to be a positive increase as all the little websites, the medium-sized websites also become accountable and need to pay their fair share back to us as our ZIP code. So, with that information I provided, Madam Mayor, I think I'm done.
Do you have anything to add, Aaron?
Yep, that summed it up.
Okay.
And with that, if you want me to, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and the final one, 10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. City Council business, our first one is "Consider Adopting a Policy Governing the Disconnection of Residential Water Service for Non-Payment of Water Rates and Charges," Resolution 2019-36.
So, Aaron Family, our Finance Director, will be presenting staff report.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So, on September 28th, 2018, Senate Bill 998 was signed into law. This new law requires the cities to adopt a disconnection of residential water service for non-payment of water rates and charges. The new policy must be posted to the agency's website in English, Spanish, Chinese, tag-along Vietnamese, and Korean. So, this is a new mandate that we'll have to follow. We're going to have to pay somebody to translate this new policy into those different languages. The second thing the policy must include is to offer a deferred or reduced payment plan, an alternative payment schedule, a means to a pill bill, and a customer service number. So, those will also be new things for the city to comply with. The new policy must prohibit shut-off until a customer is delinquent for 60 days, and at least seven days before termination, the agency must contact the customer notifying them of shut-off. Currently, we do shut-offs anywhere between 56 and 65 days, so we're pretty close to that. We'll just have to make sure we hit the 60-day mark moving forward. And we also currently reach out to customers at least seven days before by telephone to notify them that they are on the shut-off list. So, that's nothing new, but it's included in the policy. The new policy must prohibit shut-off if a bill is pending, a bill appeal is pending, a primary healthcare provider certifies termination poses a serious threat to the health and safety of a resident, a customer is financially unable to pay as demonstrated by a household member's receipt of government assistance, or a declaration that household income is below 200% of the federal poverty level, or the customer is willing to enter into a deferred, reduced, or alternative payment plan. And so, those are, will also be new mandates for the city that we don't currently offer. The agents, an agency that shuts off a meter must inform the customer how to restore service. We currently do that, so that's nothing new. And then, for customers receiving government assistance or declare that household income is below 200% of the federal poverty level, reconnection fees are capped at $50 for reconnection. Currently, our fee schedule says 75 for the first time and 100 for the second time, so we'll have to only, we'll only be able to charge them 50 for reconnection. And then, we also must waive interest on delinquent bills once every 12 months, so that's, is something new as well. So, going through that list, this law will likely increase bad debt and/or slow recovery of accounts receivable. The city currently does a great job at limiting our bad debt liabilities, and will continue to make every effort to collect on accounts receivable before sending them off to collections. Staff will monitor how this law affects the city's bad debt moving forward. I have seen a listserv, and many cities are anticipating or currently going through the process of raising rates on all customers in order to fund these new mandates. So, if after monitoring for a certain time, if this is deemed necessary for our city, staff will bring back those recommendations at a future meeting. So, Finance Staff and the City Attorney work together to provide the attached draft disconnection policy for council to review and approve, and if there are any questions with the attached policy, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Aaron?
How many, how many hookups do we have in the city in entirety?
There are over 4,000.
All right. And how many are a perpetual problem of not paying and being in arrears, almost it's a common behavior pattern?
We usually, each month, we usually have to shut off anywhere from 20 to 30 customers.
Okay, so, this is technically, if they are constantly behaving this way, it's almost a behavior pattern by choice. So, we're trying to throw them a life net to collect money from them in some manner and shape, and if they don't even fall into the category of attempting that, what are the repercussions if they choose not to participate?
Then, we still, if they, if they sign up for one of the alternate payment plans or one of those kinds of things, and they fail to honor that, then we proceed with shut-off as we would have otherwise done.
Okay. So, until we pass this tonight, they pretty much are unaware that there are more restrictive controls coming down the tubes towards them?
Well, this will actually make it harder for the city to shut off water service to customers, so...
All right. Retract that statement and say that, yeah, we have less control. So, in other words, we're almost being told that we can't do anything in a roundabout manner because of all the categories of assistance they're getting from the federal government, from the state, from whatever organization that they fall into that, oh, I don't have to, I'm, I fall in a special category, even though I'm not paying the bill, I don't have to pay the bill. So, we're, we're being told to suck it up and just absorb the loss.
Yes, that is a component of the Senate bill here.
All right, thank you very much, Aaron.
Anyone else? Would anyone from the public like to comment? Seeing none, we'll move it back to the council.
I do have another question. Can I, can I, can I, can I?
One.
So, if, if we have the writing on the wall right now saying that these people are not paying their bill, being of a very curious mind, thinking the opposite direction of negative, I could foresee more people not paying their bill and getting off the hooks as well.
You need to come up to the microphone, please. I did already close public comments, so be, be quick.
Isn't it true, though, that if somebody doesn't pay their bill, they're not allowed to get, and it is shut off, let's say, they're not allowed to get power in their name until it's paid? Isn't that correct? So, that's like the punishment, I think, where they, they can't move to another house and sign up for electricity and utilities in their name until their previous bill is paid, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any more comments, Aaron?
No, I would say, did you want me to add and provide any comment on that, or specifically? I would just say that while it is true that you do have to pay any outstanding bills before you create new service within the city limits, that is only for the city limits of Fortuna, so somebody can move to Eureka, and we would never see the, the funds if they, unless they specifically moved back to the city limits of Fortuna, and they tried signing up in their same name.
Just as a point of clarification, too, this only applies to water, it doesn't apply to electric.
Correct, water and sewer.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-36, and read by title only.
Sienna?
Need a second.
Second. Second. Skip that second thing.
Resolution 2019-36, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna establishing and adopting a policy governing the disconnection of residential water service for non-payment of water rates and charges. Councilmember Glazer?
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Our next item is Public Hearing to Consider Amendments to the Fortuna Municipal Code, Title 13-Utilities, Amending Section 13.12, Water Bills and Charges, Ordinance 2019-740, and this is the first reading.
So, again, Aaron's, this is a continuation in the updated municipal code by ordinance, so Aaron's going to provide the staff report as well.
Yes, good evening again. So, the adoption of the new residential disconnection policy that you just reviewed will result in necessary changes to the Fortuna Municipal Code. The City Attorney has reviewed the municipal code and has recommended making changes to Section 1312, which governs water bills and charges. The revisions include general language cleanup, reference to the new city disconnection policy, splitting residential and non-residential discontinuation of service parameters, and adding new Section 13.12.170 for appeals of water bill and other water charges. The full municipal code revision can be found in the Tracked Changes Version in Attachment B. Since this is a change to the municipal code, proper noticing and two readings are required. Proper noticing has been completed. The effective date will be 30 days after the council adopts the ordinance, which will be after the second reading, and that is scheduled for the first meeting in January. So, with that, if there's any questions with the municipal code revisions, I am happy to answer those.
Any questions? Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to hold the first reading of Ordinance 2019-740. Continue the public hearing to Monday, January 6, 2020, for a second reading, and read by title only.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Sienna?
Ordinance 2019-740, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, amending Chapter 13.12 of the Fortuna Municipal Code relating to the water bills and charges. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item is Consider Approving a Supplemental Budget Request for the Total Nuisance Abatement Cleanup Costs Associated with 2386 Acacia Drive, APN 202-142-014.
So, I just wanted to, I'll be starting the staff report, and we also have Wayne Hanson, our Code Compliance Officer, in attendance, and he'll be providing a presentation and overview of the abatement activities. But I just wanted to draw your attention first, the title and the agenda is slightly different than that in the staff report, and so really what we're doing is considering the confirmation of the cost of a nuisance abatement. So, there's not a supplemental budget request, just confirming the cost. The city began abatement efforts on the property, 2386 Acacia Drive in Fortuna, on February 21st, 2019. There were multiple municipal code violations, including unlawful property nuisance, including the accumulation of lumber, junk, trash, barrels, drums, salvage materials, et cetera, and the presence of occupied residential vehicles on the property in violation of the city's municipal code. Formal abatement proceedings were brought against the property, and a nuisance abatement hearing was held on July 31st, 2019, and a formal notice to abate was served on August 31st, 2019. The property occupant indicated that they were unable to comply with the abatement order and granted written permission for the city to abate the nuisances on September 24th, 2019. The agreement included provision that clearly indicated that the city count, indicated that the City Council, the cost, once confirmed by the City Council, the cost of the abatement would constitute a special assessment against the premises for costs incurred by the city, and upon recordation of the Office of the County Quarter of Notice of Lean, that it would constitute a lien on the property in the amount of the assessment. The city contracted with New Life Services for the cleanup of the debris and disposal, and Wayne will go into the details of all the activities of the abatement. There's a table included in the staff report that includes a summary of all the costs. We'll be showing that briefly in the presentation. We'll be showing that briefly in the presentation. But real quickly, removal of trash and debris that was contracted to New Life Services Company, the amount of that contract was $20,719.80. One of the two RVs that was removed from the site required towing by Humboldt Towing, that cost $200. The disposal of the RV was completed at a cost of $1,900. The city had to remove a fence and replace it to be able to get access to the yard, otherwise there was no access, and then providing general oversight of the abatement activities. And then we had legal, legal support by the city's current city attorney at Mitchell Law Firm in an amount of $943.50. But the total amount expended on this abatement was $24,943.53. This item will be funded, this amount will be funded from the Nuisance Abatement Revolving Fund, Fund 240, and any funds recovered as part of the assessment will offset the costs incurred. It could take several years to complete this, but the city has, is pursuing, you know, the property's in probate, so right now there isn't a current owner that's living. And so our code compliance officer is working with the city attorney to accelerate probate and pursuing the revenue recovery for this project. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Wayne Hanson. He's our part-time code compliance officer. Wayne's been really putting in a lot of work. This was one of the first, you know, big nuisance abatements that we've had to, to go in and do the abatement by the city. And I will say that Wayne's work on this project, Wayne's position is one of the Measure E-funded projects. And so you'll be seeing more presentations from Wayne on any number of, one of the case, on any number of cases that he's working on around the city. A lot of them were getting voluntary compliance, but this was one that we had to go, go in and clean up ourselves. So with that, I'll hand it over to Wayne.
Good evening, mayor and city council. As the city manager said, this is one of several houses in Fortuna that needed attention. The overview again, the city was aware of this property way back in 2017 on an abatement notice that the people that lived there at the time ignored. I got involved in the case in February of 19, and first asked the subjects of the house, please clean up on your own, you know, start process going to the dump. They refused. And the people who live in the house actually don't own the house, as he stated, it's a house where the people that own the house died several years ago. And basically, there's squatters living in the house, and we're trying to deal with getting them out. But for due process, first notice, the city council with city ordinances to please clean up your property issued on March 6, final notice about two months later, trying to give them time to clean up the house. And then we went through all the hearings according to the city charter. There was an RV there towed on the 26th, there was actually two. I was showing the photographs, this second one, they're able to drive off. And we towed the RV to city courtyard to put it there. There was people, transients, living in the motorhomes in front of the yard, which is against city ordinance. And right here, the property's cleanup effort, it took three days. Originally, it was a two-day project for New Life Services, only company in Humboldt County, it's, has the training expertise to remove hazardous materials. They used a skid steer cab with a bucket, which is basically, you know, a little bigger than a Bobcat. And the reason, one of the reasons were to save their employees backs from picking up all the debris. During the debris, it's not mentioned here, but there was over 100 hypergromic needles and cap found spread out through the trash. People that reside at this house are narcotic users, methamphetamines, and heroin. Not mentioned on this, too, another reason it was towards the top of priority list. Fortuna Police Department since 2013 has responded 150 times, separate calls to this house. There was an attempted homicide there, a gentleman was stabbed, a kidnapping, but many calls of issues from the neighborhood, many calls from citizens on Acacia complaining about this house to the police department and the city of Fortuna. We had to remove a fence, I didn't personally, from an adjoining neighbor, somewhere you could gain access to the backyard where it was located. And here is just the, as the city manager talked about, the total cleanup cost the city had to pay for was $24,999.98. We try to keep it under $25,000. Just kidding. But this gives you the breakdown, you have invoices on your staff report of why the cost, the majority of the cost, again, is New Life Services. It was three days, four employees, and I stayed on site to watch them fill four 40-yard dumpsters, about the size of Conex, to the brim of trash, household garbage, wood, metal, bicycle parts, every piece of thing, and even a kitchen sink, I saw. This is what the property originally looked like for years, two motorhomes. The one on the right is one we towed to the courtyard. It was not running, but people were living in these things for years. The one on the left, they were able to get it started and they drove off with it. I have no idea where it went. Again, asked them for months, whoops, to clean it up, please. And these photos, I'm trying to back up, this is the yard. Basically, they're using their yard, I found out later, we'll get to the backyard, it's a dump site. What's tragic about this, the people that live there, I verified through recology, they pay for recology to pick up the garbage. They're just too lazy, I've talked to them, to put the garbage in the garbage cans. But various photos of trash, debris. This is the backyard. Basically, I would say, if I did a thesis, probably 20-plus years, people were using the backyard as a dump site. Again, that's causing rodents and rats for the neighborhood, the smell, and the type of people that are going to the house. This is the front yard, that's the main residence, it's a double-wide mobile there. You can see the garbage accumulating in the, in the front, and the neighbors look at that for a long time. Neighborhood's very happy with the city of Fortuna. This is the side yard, is showing trash. Where you looked on the property, I think it's .17 of an acre is full of trash, obviously. More garbage. So, and there was a marijuana grow house in the back, that non-operative that was tore down, not permitted structure, fire hazard, electrical cords going everywhere. And that's the side yard, they simply just step out their front porch and throw the trash in the yard. Of course, flies going everywhere. This is a neighbor's fence, gave the city and New Life Services permission to access the backyard of the abatement. So this is from the neighbor's property, the fence had to be removed and all the brush. And there's the hole on the right-hand side. And more trash, more trash. And that's just the hole going in. That's the skid steer on the right showing, picking up the trash. The city workers are not used because of hazmat, you know, the needles, other chemicals and, and paints. And this is showing the, the neighbor's property that was accessed, skid steer coming out. And more trash. And this is, and towards the end, that's the backyard, which was completely filled, you know, four feet deep on everything you can imagine. I said sarcastically, a kitchen sink, yeah, there was a kitchen sink in the backyard. Structure coming down. This is, one on the left is the neighbor's side yard, the skid steer. They call that the Grand Torino. I left it in the backyard because the four 40-yard dumpsters are full, and that's not going to collect rats or whatever. So that car was left behind in the backyard. And this is a picture of the backyard now, all the trash and debris is removed except for the car. But all the brush, it is grown over it, intertwined. Now, this is the front of the house, showing, remember the previous pictures, all the trash and debris has been removed. And that's what a 40-yard dumpster looks like. There was four of those. Originally, they bid two of them, but they kept on finding more and more stuff. And there is a, a big dumpster. And there's the city of Fortuna. Any questions?
Are the people still living in that house?
Yes. And as the city manager said, working with the city attorney, trying to find a legal way to get them out of there. Be honest with you, they're starting to collect trash again.
That was my next question.
And last night I was over there, she wasn't happy, told me she was going to get a restraining order against me to keep. But yeah, that's the reason we're trying to legal probate because nobody owns the house, deceased people own the house, and, and they haven't paid their taxes in three years. So it takes a total of five years for the county comes in and repossesses the house for lack of payment.
And that's why it's important for the council to confirm these costs tonight. What we'd like to do is get those recorded as a lien, so that way when the, when the county does move to do a lien sale, that the city's lien will be recorded on there as, as an assessment.
Are the neighbors keeping an eye out on it?
Yeah, the neighborhood, the one gentleman that let us come through the side yard, very supportive. The whole neighborhood, I stayed there for the whole three days. The neighborhood knows it was the city of Fortuna and the Mark pickup truck with the city of Fortuna on it. And every day, neighbors are coming up, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Keeping them involved, that keeps a line of communication with you, complaint-driven, and then we can act on it, so.
Yeah. And there's several other houses. When I took over the, took over, when I was hired as a code compliance, I just took on the bigger projects, the, the worst of the worst, trying to get.
Thank you, Wayne.
Any other questions?
So are we going to, as a city, put a lien on 2020, 21 property taxes?
So this, confirming these costs, it will be assessed, special assessment, and then we'll work with our attorney to get that recorded as quickly as possible as a lien. So I, I don't know the timing. I think our hope would be that it does show up. Our finance director may have some.
Yeah, in order to get it on the 2021 tax bill, it has to be submitted by, before August, so we'll, we'll make that line, get that on there for 2021.
I just.
An assessment lien, so.
The message last time was the same again tonight, is that, I'm sorry, if we have to continue 20 years into the future to chase after this, collect the money to justify accountability and wrongdoing by people that don't give a hoot, my direction is a city, hold true and strong and keep on going after that money to collect it. No ifs, ands, or buts, no questions, you know, be committed, don't show any weakness, because there's other people in this city that are probably watching and following this. And if we, if we choose to be not 100%, we're going to be, we're going to lose in the battle. So, yeah, I mean.
I would just add, too, one thing you're not seeing pictures of is, you know, this is one that required our work as an abatement, but I know Wayne has four others that they're voluntary complying with. Some are, were actually a lot worse than this one. So, you know, even though we're not having to go through and do the abatement, we're also getting the, the results on other properties as well, so.
I know one on Ronerville Road across from church, that was, that was a nightmare. And it's, it's a.
Sinister away, I call him the cat person, had all the dead cats.
Yeah.
Life Services, that citizen called them, their bid to clean up that place was $45,000. That citizen, because of the trees were engulfing the house, plus the material that was inside the house, but that citizen hasn't cost the city anything, he's cleaning it up himself.
All right.
He has been for the last three or four months. And that's the best scenario, doesn't cost the city, and the citizen cleans it up himself. But that's the working process.
Yeah.
Hasn't paid anything for the cleaning.
Yeah. Well, I've, I've paid you compliments in the past, and I'm going to pay you a compliment tonight. You're a wonderful code enforcement person, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any more comments on this property? Does anyone from the public want to comment on this item?
Thanks, Wayne.
Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Thank you, Wayne. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion to confirm the cost of nuisance abatement associated with the property nuisance abatement at 2386 Acacia Drive in the amount of $24,949, excuse me, $24,943.53.
Second the motion.
Sienna doesn't say, roll call or voice. It's a voice vote. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Fortuna Municipal Code, Title 17, zoning regulations, adding Section 17.05.120, modification of lot dimensions. This is the second reading of ordinance 2019-739.
I think you skipped item D.
We need item.
Did I skip item D? Sorry. I did, and I just read all of that so perfectly. Okay, back to item D. Consider adopting a resolution establishing speed limits based upon engineering and traffic surveys, resolution 2019-37.
See, you had something I didn't have.
So I'd like, before I hand this over to Brendan Byrd, I just wanted to say, Brendan, our new deputy city engineer, he worked with Frank Pendry with GHD. They did our speed surveys and traffic engineering to do our speed zones last time. And this is, you know, one of the reasons why this is important to the city is because we can't enforce our speed limits and have them stick unless we do our speed surveys. So this has been a long time in coming, and this is something that Brendan worked on with our consulting traffic engineer to, to finish. So Brendan has our staff report for this item.
Tried to skip me, but here I am.
I did.
So thank you, everybody. As Merritt mentioned, I'm here to talk about resolution 2019-37, which is to consider adopting a resolution establishing speed limits based on engineering and traffic surveys. So the California Vehicle Code sets 25 mile an hour speed limits on all roads, local roads, automatically. The way that you can adjust those and change those is via engineering and traffic surveys that substantiate and show a need for a different speed limit. So the last time we did this was in 2012, and the code requires about every five to seven years that you need to go through this exercise again, so you could show what the current speed patterns and other things that may have changed in the area during that time. A little bit on speed limits themselves, they're typically set by performing a speed survey. You find the 85th percentile speed from the survey, which is the number at which 85 out of 100 cars are traveling at that speed or below. You round that to the nearest five miles an hour, and then if safety concerns at the site warrant it, you adjust that down an additional five miles an hour. And that could be for line-of-sight reasons, narrow roadway, intersections, things of that nature. So how this works out in our traffic surveys that were performed, our consulting traffic engineer surveyed, surveyed 19 locations throughout the city of Fortuna, and the results of that are that 18 of the 19 locations surveyed are recommended for no change of the existing posted speed limit. This is due, mostly due to the fact that the sampled 85th percentile speed limit matches really well with the current posted speed limit. And then in some cases where the sampled 85th posted, sampled 85th percentile speed limit was above what is currently posted, those are in areas that kind of necessitate that additional five mile an hour reduction to bring it down to a lower speed, which makes it a little bit safer in some areas. So that was 18 of the 19 locations. There was an additional one that is recommended for a change, and that is the segment of North Fortuna Boulevard in between Main Street and Smith Lane. The traffic engineer recommends that that gets changed from the current 25 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour, which should fit nicely going in between Main Street, which is a 25, and South Fortuna Boulevard, which is a 35. So this will kind of still maintain some safety, bringing, bringing it up five miles per hour, but to help kind of match current traffic patterns a little bit better. City engineering and public work staff have reviewed the work, as Merritt had mentioned, and we concur with the findings. And then as a result of that, and based on the recommendation from the traffic engineer, city staff is recommending adopting resolution 2019-37, which would establish speed limits in the city of Fortuna based upon engineering and traffic surveys. Questions?
Anyone have any questions for Brendan?
That is, that is only when you're heading southbound off of Main Street and making the curve to head towards Cal Fire. It's just going to be that one side that goes 25 to 30?
The north and southbound.
So it's both sides?
Correct.
So it goes by Sport and Cycle, Sport and Cycle, goes by Sport and Cycle as well? So from being 25, it goes to 30?
Correct.
Then it's going to reduce to 25 when it goes through town?
Correct. So it'll, if you think about it, right now, it goes from 35 to 25, so it's kind of a hard change of 10 miles an hour, going from South Fortuna Boulevard to North Fortuna Boulevard going to town. So now, the speed limit will reflect kind of a middle ground.
Okay.
So 35, 30, 25.
Any other questions? Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you.
After tomorrow.
I guess. No one else is ever asleep under me. I guess, no one else, is everybody sleeping, Jeremy?
All right. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-37 and read by title only.
Second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, Siana?
Resolution 2019-37, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adopting the engineering and traffic surveys prepared by a registered professional traffic engineer dated December 2019 and thereby establishing speed zones on city streets and roads. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
All right, good job.
Now I'll have to read my thing all over again. Item E, consider amendments to the Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17 zoning regulations adding section 17.05.120 modification of lot dimensions, the second reading of ordinance 2019-739.
So Liz Shori, our deputy director of community development, has that staff report.
Thank you, Merritt, honorable mayor and council members. So yeah, this is a second reading for a zoning amendment to modify the lot dimensions that are applied in the Fortuna Municipal Code and those are primarily, are always implemented on basically subdivisions where, that's where those come into play or get applied to new lots. This is a second reading. So I don't have any new information, it was discussed at the last meeting and the planning commission did recommend approval of this in November. But just as a reminder, so there is a, in your, in your packet, basically that's the same information. There's a table of the municipal code standards for new lots and that lists the existing lot width and lot depth and the minimum lot size, so you can kind of see that they vary all over the place. And the purpose of this is really to give flexibility, there are some cases where some of the dimensions are hard to apply or hard to create given, you know, certain lot configure, existing lot configuration. So this is really to, to provide flexibility and it would be approved by the planning commission through a conditional use permit process. So it would be a discretionary review rather than staff or, rather than automatic upon request. So there is some review that gives the city, you know, that the normal standards would apply unless the use permit is approved. So I don't have anything new to add, if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Liz?
Did we make that correction that we discussed last time about how the math just didn't work for, was it residential multifamily?
We did, yeah. So, yeah, it applies to all of the zones. So I think that's what you were talking about, just.
Well, I'm trying to remember from last conversation, but I was doing the math and, like freeway commercial has maximum of three times lot size, so it makes sense, but residential multifamily, 80 feet and three times the width, that's 19,200 feet, how can that be with a minimum lot size of 10,000? Weren't we gonna make that a change from us?
We were, and I had that in my notes, I don't see that it got into this ordinance, but I think since you, so you just want to make the correction on, so if you look at page 170, the residential zones for residential multifamily, the 80 feet on the width and then the depth is minimum three times and it should say maximum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
And our city clerk just checked the minutes, that's it. For the residential multifamily, instead of minimum, it should state maximum, so that was requested and I thought that had been picked up. So then the only change we'd have in this for the second reading would be the change from minimum to maximum.
Yes.
Under required lot depth.
All right, thank you.
So we'll make that change. Thanks for remembering that, Jeremy.
Would anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I make a motion to hold the second reading of ordinance 2019-739 and read by title only.
Second.
With the correction, Mike?
With the correction. Maximum to minimum.
Yeah, I mean, you still.
Minimum to maximum.
Yes. All right, we have a motion in a second, Siana?
Ordinance 2019-739, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, amending the Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17 zoning regulations adding section 17.05.2012, let me say that again, adding section 17.05.120 modification of lot dimensions. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thanks, Siana. All right, our next item is a public hearing to consider approving a subdivision of 1.57 acre lot into six multifamily lots, resolution 2019-38.
Deputy Director Shori will be presenting that staff report as well.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. So this is a subdivision of a 1.57 acre parcel on the overhead, but you have it in your packet, the location is on the southeast side of Smith Lane, generally between Ronerville Road on the east and Fortuna Boulevard on the south. It is in the residential multifamily zone and does meet the, the density requirements or the density provisions of the general plan. So, and it is, so it fits the zoning and the general plan designation. The project site is vacant and there it is on the aerial photograph, you can see, so it's on Smith Lane, it's highlighted there in yellow, it is a vacant parcel and all, virtually all of the developments surrounding that project are multifamily, so it fits in with the, you know, with the neighborhood as well. Oops, that wasn't supposed to happen. Oh, did you do that? Yeah, and we, so this is a, oh, there, that's the site plan. If you, yeah, you can stay there, that's good. So this is the tentative map that's proposed, it is on the 1.57 acre parcel and Smith Lane is on the left side of the screen there. So you can see the driveway entrance that's proposed to serve the parcels. So basically, it's a 1.57 acre parcel and it's proposing six, six parcels so that each building, there'll be one building on each parcel. So it's a, you know, it's a singular development, but for purposes of financing and just to manage the construction components, the phasing, it is proposed on six lots and they do range, they meet, they meet the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet and up to 13,197 square feet. So as you can see on the site plan, the buildings are kind of towards the rear and the parking is in the front of each building, so they'll each be basically self-contained with, as, you know, as far as the municipal code goes. There'll be nine parking spaces to serve each, on each lot, to serve each building and that does meet the zoning code of two spaces for each two-bedroom unit and one space for each one-bedroom unit. And so there'll be 54 parking spaces overall and then the driveway will be shared to serve each lot so, or, you know, so that each lot will have access to it and that will be maintained through an easement, an access easement and then CCNRs will stipulate the maintenance and the management of that parking easement. Otherwise, the open space for each lot is, you know, they're self-contained, so there's not a common, open space easement as is sometimes done. And each building will have also, in addition to that open space, there'll be, each unit will have a, a deck on the bottom or a balcony on the top floor, so they are two, two-story units. And each unit will, or each parcel will also have its own independent trash enclosure. Public improvements are basically existing in the roadway, this area has, you know, as you know, there have been quite a few multifamily developments, so for the most part, the infrastructure is in place, there won't be any, likely any need for utility upgrades or expansion of the existing system. There are conditions of approval to review the capacity for utilities, water and sewer and storm drainage, it's expected that they'll meet the, the standards, but if not, they will, you know, need, need to make whatever modifications are needed. Storm drainage, in addition to the city system and the road, there'll also of course be the retention basins or that low-impact development infrastructure on each of the parcels. Utility providers have been contacted, no comments or requirements for new systems. The Fortuna Fire Protection District is satisfied with accessibility of the development. So, you know, basically, it's, you know, as easy as softening the aerial, it is an infill development located in the central part of the city, it's in proximity to services, shopping, bus lane and, and things like that. So it fits the neighborhood and it's in conformance with the zoning code and the general plan. The planning commission did consider this at their December 10th meeting and they did vote to recommend approval of the subdivision. They also approved a conditional use permit because there are six units or on each lot and 54, or I'm sorry, 36 overall, it is subject to a conditional use permit. So that was approved by the planning commission and it is contingent on fulfilling the project by approving the subdivision. And the buildings will also be subject to design review and they have not submitted a, the complete formal plan, but they did submit preliminary or conceptual plans just to give, you know, the planning commission and the council a sense for what the intent is of the developer. Oops. So these are the building elevations. See, you know, the two-story units, they make use of a variety of materials to kind of break up the mass of the buildings. They've got horizontal hardy plank on this, on the lower floor and board and bat on the second floor and then shingles in the, in the gable areas, they've got projections and then you can see the decks and the balconies there. And then I'm not sure, well, you've had a chance to look at these, but this does show the layout. Each building will have, I think it's three two-story units and three one-stor, or I'm sorry, three, two-bedroom units and three one-bedroom units. That's the first floor and the second floor. So that's all I have, I'll hand that back to the council for any questions.
Looks like a nice project. Does anyone have any questions for Liz?
Yeah. Without specifically being called out in here, but implying from the homeowners association and CCNRs, this is a, a marketed, these units will be for sale?
They, yeah, I think that's one of the reasons for creating the lots is that the developer doesn't necessarily have any immediate intent to sell them, but over the long term, that would be, you know, flexibility for, you know, for any plans that he might have to, you know, any needs to, to sell off any of the lots.
So he'd.
Yeah, it would be allowed. It, it's something that's, I think, has worked into the plan to ultimately be able to sell some of the lots off.
Is this property one-time wetlands?
Not, you know, it hasn't been found to be wetlands and there weren't, wasn't any evidence that there are wetlands on the site.
I, I've watched this parcel sit dormant as all of Smith Lane was gradually being developed. And always wondered when it was gonna, somebody was gonna grab a hold of it and run with it. First question, is there a requirement to do an environmental habitat study? It's one of the last remaining open parcels with everything else developed around it. You would think that if there was something trying to escape, this is the last little bastion of habitat. Has a habitat study been done or be required?
So a couple of things, so the site has already been reviewed and gone through the SEQA process, there was a proposal for similar development, a multifamily development comparable to this one, I think that was in 2003 and so that was reviewed, circulated and adopted by, I think it was the planning commissions and so state law under SEQA does allow projects, you know, not needing any additional SEQA analysis if mitigated negative declaration has been adopted. So that wasn't automatically required for the site. And then as far as any habitat, there wasn't any evidence of it, there's no, you know, and some, some vacant sites like this, we have others in the city where the drainage, because of the grading and because of the development around it, you know, there might be seeping water or the drainage might naturally go to that site. We didn't find that in this, on this site, there's no off-site drainage that flows through the site. So there wasn't any indications of any need for a habitat study because of the parcel size and, you know, the surrounding development.
Okay, the drainage in that zone, I want to say comes from the south going to the north, so the FITC project that was done and completed to the south, I'm assuming they're required to do the same kind of retention of the water on site so it makes an attempt to seep into the clay, which is not possible, but anyway, creating a holding area for the water to try to seep sideways all three to 360 degrees. If there is no existing flow coming from the FITC site, then that unit, developed, developed unit will stand alone. I thought it was interesting how Leonard Witch Church had incorporated the drainage underneath porous concrete that was in front of the parking spots and the trenches that go east to west and then also north to south in their footprint. So if, let's say, worst-case scenario, the amount of rain that comes and impacts that site as well, all the rest of the sites, is there any kind of style design that's incorporated into this that actually will create a, a flow pattern, like a low channel, there'll be into the roadway that's, that's used by everybody to enter and exit? Is there anything that's designed into that or the assumption that we're gonna have dry weather forever and we don't have to concern ourselves?
No, absolutely, there, the drainage is planned for that development and that will be submitted as part of the improvement plans for the subdivision and then individually for each of the parcels, but I think generally it'll be designed that the onsite water can have two, two ways that it's handled. One is the driveways can, there's some runoff, surface runoff that will flow towards Smith Lane, so like through the driveway, there'll be like a channel, a channel drain and there's a storm drain inlet right in front of the site, so, you know, that's the natural location for that. And then each of the parcels will have the required low-impact development retention channels for each of the sites.
This was just unique because rather than being exposed, sort of like the redwood roofing that has a pond, this is all underground capped over with porous concrete, so that's a unique, unique approach.
But they still might have to have that same.
Pardon?
They'll still have to have probably some kind of an LID, which is what you're talking about in front of Redwood Empire.
I haven't seen it on the footprint.
It's in the.
This isn't.
Of approval for the conditional use permit, compliance with the State Water Resources Board Phase 2 MS4.
So.
LID requirements.
Well, if you look, you'll see.
This is.
Clarification, councilmember Glazer, is, so it's not, this isn't final design, this is just a tentative map, so they will be submitting improvement plans with that final design, then we'll have all those drainage details that we'll review. But, and at the tentative maps stage, then we just, we review it for feasibility. So we looked at the preliminary drainage calc, there's already storm drain that goes through the site, so we don't have their final design yet.
It's there, just underground.
We will decide that this is an okay project and then the improvement plans are taken care of within the city engineering department. Any other questions?
One last question.
One last question. I know Dennis Fitzy, when he was doing his, his apartments on Shea, he was requesting to have separate water meters for each one of the apartments. Wasn't that one of the, his, he had requested and it was turned down. This project only has, for each of the six locations, only one water meter. I know I'm being critical because I'm pre-approving this, but I have an issue about having five other tenants that might be abusive, that force you to have to pay for their overusages. But I'm just inputting that for complaint. I think it's wrong. I think any kind of apartment complex or development should have individual water meters, period, so that nobody gets to hurt anybody by abusing the system. So anyway, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Does the public have any comments?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I am Nicholas Notoff with Witch Church Engineering. I wanted to make myself available for any possible questions you guys had about this project. This is one of the ones that I've worked on pretty extensively. So this is not my public comment to you, but if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Look forward to seeing it built.
Thanks for being here.
Of course.
All right. With that, we will close public comment. Everyone else sleeping.
I'll make a rela...
He's doing them all. Good.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-38. A resol... Oh, and read by title only. You get to do the rest.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a most and a second. Sienna?
Resolution 2019-38, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna approving a tentative map to subdivide, oh, subdivide a 1.57 acre lot into six multifamily lots ranging in size from 10,000 square feet to 13,197 square feet. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. The next item is a public hearing to consider repealing and replacing Title 15, Chapter 15.10 of Municipal Code with the 2019 California Building Codes mandated by the California Building Standard Commission and Department of Housing and Community Development, Ordinance 2019-741. I'm gonna let Tammy take this since I am a builder, but it's not like I was, you have a choice anyway, so.
I was just gonna say, we're just gonna say no.
So Gary Goode, our building official, has this staff report, and this is one that the council sees every couple of years, so it's like we've done in years past. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gary, and he can explain where we're going.
Well, Madam Pro Tem Mayor and Council, this is to adopt the building codes of 2019 California Building Codes, and I'm gonna try to keep this pretty simple and quick. This happens every three years. State of California, through the International Building Codes, modifies the international codes for, with all the California amendments. They have already adopted it in for us. They, the section, the reason we have adopted it is because we have our administrative portion of it, our fees in our Fortuna Municipal Codes that need to be added in, which we have here. The, I don't guess, not too much of everything. The codes were actually in January 1st, 2019, they were actually adopted in. They were actually out for print in July, and we have 180 days. This is standard procedure. They have always ran in California and most of the country. So in, in January 1st of 2020, well, the, there'll be the new 2019 California Building Codes, and that's all of them straight across the board. And with all, we have gone in, we have our amendments, we haven't changed anything within. It's the same ones we've been running for the last five code cycles. They seem to work very well, and they're kind of tailored into where, how we manage the, all the projects and how we run the office and, and our fee structures that we have, building code fees, so. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Any questions from council?
So this is amending, like, the new energy calc's and all that stuff that has to be mandated by the state?
All mandated. They're all in the codes, ready to go.
Is there a public education campaign for the developers, builders, tradesmen?
Uh, you can, there's all kinds of stuff online. CalBO has stuff out. We also belong to SAC Valley Association of Building Officials. We get more stuff out of them than the CalBO because they cater to a little bit smaller jurisdictions. We're, that's why we kind of belong to them. We do ourself through the building department, we get training from CalBO, and we also do SAC Valley because they, they stagger them. Having things that actually come to the North Coast here is very hard. They just don't come here because there's not that many, you know, the building departments, not any people are gonna actually, you know, nobody's gonna travel from, from San Francisco to come out for a class when they have them down there somewhat regular. The problem is, is they have half-day classes, and for us to, to join these things is kind of difficult at times. So I have been requested by a few of the contractors, because a few years ago, we used to go over and, and we have done it. We didn't do it the last time. It was a little, while we did it, but we did it in a smaller case was, you know, the main changes between, you know, the codes we're utilizing and the new codes that are coming out. So we tried to come up with some sort of handout that, that, on, on all the main things that seem to be, they on every job, so.
Okay, open public comment. Anybody from the public have anything to say? And we'll close public comment.
I make a motion to introduce and hold first reading of Ordinance 2019-741 and continue the public hearing to Monday, January 6, 2020.
Oh, good catch.
For a second reading and read by title only.
I'll second the motion.
Sienna?
Ordinance 2019-741, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, repealing and replacing Title 15, Buildings in Construction, Division One, Generally, Chapter 15.10, Building Code of the Fortuna Municipal Code. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Next, we have a city manager's report.
Okay, I'd like to start by going through our upcoming meeting schedule. Our next regular council meeting will be on January 6, and followed by our, the meeting after that on January 21st. Our next planning commission is on January 14th, and our next Measure E meeting is tomorrow, December 17th. And I think that's an important meeting. We're gonna be running through, you know, what the actual expenditures were for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year, so there'll be a presentation on the projects completed as well as some pictures and, and showing what's been done with those funds. Our next RONER Community Recreation and Park District meeting was canceled for January 1st, but there'll be a special meeting on January 8th. I have just a few items from my verbal report. We're continuing to develop the city's website. Our city clerk has been working with the various departments and updating the language, and the format has been transferred over to the new platform, and we haven't gone live yet, but it looks a lot nicer, and we're trying to really update the content so that it, you know, is a whole new package, not just a new format and a new look, but updated content, better links, better access to forms. And so it's, it's taking a lot, so it'll probably be another month or two before we get that live, but it's, it's looking great, and it's, we're making good progress. We're also with the news of our retirement of our police chief. We're work on developing a strategy for the recruitment of an interim and a permanent replacement for our police chief, and so we expect to be putting out a recruitment for that position very soon. I attended a Wildlife Conservation Board meeting in Sacramento to represent the city's Jamison Creek project, which was being considered for funding at its meeting. The grant was awarded for just under $1 million to complete the work for the Jamison Culvert. So that'll be almost 100% grant funded with another 1.7 million grant from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. But it was really interesting to, you know, see the committee take up each one of the projects individually. They do have a consent calendar for some of the smaller projects, but they debate and talk about each project, and ours was first. And so I was a little nervous, I hadn't been in front of the Wildlife Conservation Board, but, you know, it's, it's an interesting board, and they have a lot of different types of restoration and acquisition projects, and I think it was great that the city was able to fund this project. And we have big maintenance liabilities, and, and we'll be able to improve habitat and also allow for flood control. So I think that's gonna be a great project, and you'll see more on that coming up. We plan to go to construction this summer. Let's see, I'm continuing to work on the feasibility study and our due diligence for the new police station. So we're hoping to have a presentation to the council sometime in January to show us our results, and we can determine how we want to proceed with that project. And I was told, but I did not attend, that Fbid had a successful free movie event, that it was a packed house, and that it brought a lot of people to the downtown. And then one other update, you may have noticed some of the, the solar streetlights going in on 12th Street, so it's a little bit tough with coordination. We won't be able to get them all up, but I think what our plan is, is to have a number of them up along the, the northerly or westerly side of the street, and then the side with the high school. Those may come later. There's some conflicts with the wires. AT&amp;T and SunLink won't be down when PG&E is, but we will have at least half the lights up by the time that they take down the, the existing streetlights. So we will have light there, it's not gonna be all of them, and then once they get the wires down, we'll be able to put the others, but it's just too tight, and the poles would extend through the existing wire. So we're just trying to coordinate that, and I think we have a good plan in place, so look for that happening in the near future. We don't know the date of the, of the shutdown and, and the change, but it's coming soon. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Mayor? All right, future agenda items, anybody? All right, moving on to city council reports.
Why, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The scheduled Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting on Thursday, I will not be attending that. I have a conflict, so unless somebody calls, our spot will remain open. I personally want to thank all the city's employees for making our city so successful. It's nice to be living in a wonderful town of 13,000 that, that has its act together. We have a wonderful city manager who is heading the helm and making things happen in the right manner. We also have a wonderful council that works together quite effectively, and I enjoy that. Is there any plan in the future for fixing the millennial clock in front of, of the truck store? Because it is not working, and I, every time I go by it, I check my watch, and it's 12 o'clock, and it's not.
Yeah, so I had a discussion with our General Services Superintendent, and the manufacturer of that clock went out of business.
No kidding?
So we're exploring options, and, and right now, we're looking at whether we replace it in its entirety, and we're looking at some maybe contributions from other, other funding sources to do that, or if we can replace kind of the, just the hardware that's working within the clock. So we're working on that and coming up with a plan. We don't have one, I don't think we have it quite figured out yet, but we're, we're en route to doing that.
I had a chance to actually personally meet those people at one of the expos, one of the conventions. Disappointing, but I guess we will prevail. For the listening audience that have sensitive ears, that don't like listening to politically correct, just put, push the mute button right now. For years, we were stigmatized by the sensitivity of, of using Merry Christmas, and we kept on saying Happy Holidays. And I have sort of harsh message to the public and the business people for that. You are cowards when you say Happy Holidays. There is only one message you say during this time of the year, and it's Merry Christmas. And if you are a business that choose to say that, I would hope the clientele would correct you immediately to say Merry Christmas, and if they do not choose to use that in a rightful manner, then don't go to their business. I mean, it only happens once a time, folks, December 25th, and we need to remember how special it is. Merry Christmas is the only thing you say. God bless America, God bless our troops, may you be safe wherever you are. And for those of you that watch us faithfully or just happen to be watching us, thank you for watching our, our council meeting. And Court, if you're listening, this is to you. Thanks for watching as well. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Mike?
Thank you. Well, we had no, no HCOG meeting in December, and I got to enjoy, and thank you, Dean, for recognizing the employees. It's timely because I've got to enjoy all of us working together to recognize the employees at our annual Christmas party at the River Lodge, recognizing them for the breakfast and the work that they do, and some of them, the longevity, 20-plus years sometimes. I also got to partner with and help with the Chamber of Commerce, recognizing and celebrating the CCC and all the work that they do every year for the City of Fortuna, from special events to working in the creek, removing invasive vegetation and fish passage projects. They work hard. And in my time around Fortuna, I've seen them work on a lot of projects, and some of them, they're away from home for the very first time. Had them, some of them real close to Fortuna, but one person was from Massachusetts, and she's out here in California away from her family. And they were very appreciative. I was really surprised at Santa Claus being as popular as he was for, I mean, it was awesome. And it was a great time, and they're a great organization and an asset to Fortuna and Eureka, Riedel, Ferndale, wherever. So maybe next year will be a group effort, but they're an awesome bunch of people. Also, there is no Historical Commission meeting in December, but there is one coming up in January. And as I was remiss last month, I'm now on the League of California Cities Policy Committee for Transportation, Communication, and Public Works. And our very first meeting will be in January, I think it's January 23rd.
No. Jan... Yeah.
I think it's somewhere, yeah, the right...
Yeah, 23rd.
So I'm looking forward to that. And again, thank you for a great year, and we do work together. Each of us has a little niche thing that maybe the rest of them don't have, and as a group, we get it done for the citizens. Thank you.
Jeremy?
So I had a Parks and Rec Commission meeting last Monday, and there's a lot of stuff going on at the parks, exciting stuff. They're waiting, their biggest project is they're waiting on to hear about whether or not they received grant funding for a major park overhaul at Dubruck Park. That was supposed to be reported back to us by the end of December. Now they're talking about the first part of 2020, so waiting on bated breath on that. That was the last meeting for three commissioners. I believe two of the three are going to re-up, but would like to say thank you for the service of Sal Canici. He joined the commission in 2014, and, and he's termed out and has chosen not to continue. Work takes him in another direction, and he's a guy that kind of, after my own heart, if he can't do it all the way, he doesn't want to do it. So I respect that choice, and I appreciate his commitment to our parks. On Sunday, December 12, 22nd, at 1:00 PM, there'll be a movie in the park indoors. We're gonna blow up our inflatable movie screen and play a holiday movie for any kids that want to come down to the park and the pavilion on the 22nd on Sunday at 1:00 PM. Not mentioned by my colleagues, but one thing that was really special to me about tonight's meeting is it's the one-year anniversary of being sworn in, so made it our first year. Technically, it's tomorrow because it was the 17th, but it's the Monday, so here we are. So I'm just excited and thrilled at, at our first year together, and learned a lot, and I've enjoyed my time here, and no regrets for stepping up to this seat, so, so far. Yeah, also attended the city employee appreciation breakfast, and several of our law enforcement were on... were honored for multiple years of service. I think there was three of our officers that were recognized for 10 years and one for five. Oh, one for 15, thank you. And, and our dispatcher, Tanya, was 20-year recognition for time on the job. And then also 10 years for our Museum Depot curator, Alex Service, which is a segue into a little celebration they had for their volunteers on Saturday. And the depot, every year holds a little appreciation open house for their volunteers that spend time throughout the year supporting the, the museum there. And I guiltily admitted, it's probably been 10 years since I've been in that building, so it was pretty fascinating to go through there. They have quite the treasure trove of, of very neat artifacts about Fortuna. We were both kind of looking over a book about the Star Hotel and some of its history. We saw different fishing lures and fishing poles and pictures of people where they're standing next to a fish as tall as they are, and that used to come right out of our Yule River. And I guess they do have a rotating stock. Right now, the thing that's going on is there's a corner with Christmas from 1919 and Chris from, Christmas from 1959, so it shows you 100 years and 50 years ago what was going on in Fortuna. So it's pretty cool. And I encourage anybody to go and visit, I think you'll enjoy your time there. And the neat part about that, too, is Alex had her whole family there, and her two twins, Robert and Virginia, were there, and she had a picture on her screensaver on her computer of the first annual appreciation open house, where those kids were just under two years old, and now they're going to be 12 the day after Christmas, so kind of fun. Yeah, I have an Fbid meeting tomorrow, so there'll be more to report back on our next meeting. And again, like the city manager said, Fbid just hosted free movies at the movie theater for the last two Saturdays with a huge hit. It was a huge hit. And this was the first year that they offered a current Christmas movie, which was really exciting to all the kids that participated. Frozen Two was the featured film. We can say that now, it's afterwards. I wanted also say that I really like how the light poles turned out. Batteries in the ground was a great choice, so I appreciate you bringing us those small change orders to really make a lasting, I think, impression to all of us that we'll enjoy for years to come. Last but not least, I did help paint a little bit on the Christmas cutouts that you see on the boulevard. There's some really dedicated people there that are, put a lot of time and energy and artistic talent to making those things really shine. And you'll notice that there's several new ones out this year, too. There's a snow globe at the far end of town, near Strong's Creek, that's got our little welcome sign in it. And then there's a dog and a cat sitting on top of a present in front of the veterinarian's office, how appropriate. And there's also another candle in front of the Starbucks. So those are the four I can think of off the top of my head. Oh, and the train in front of the, the fire department is also brand new. So always something fun with those people, and I appreciate the volunteers at Fortuna that make Christmas special for us.
Well, the paint smells so good, you want to do it.
Well.
No?
No.
Are you done?
It's like paint by number, so I can help. Yeah, I'm done.
Thanks, Jeremy. Tammy?
Well, the weatherman didn't report it, but it snowed in Fortuna last Friday night down Main Street. They had their open house, lots of snow machines, and it was really nice. The, the lighted parade down there was also another success, so it's just one of our another festive activities here in Fortuna. Humboldt Transit Authority meeting last month got canceled, our one this month is tomorrow. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Please drive safe, do not drink and drive, and everybody enjoy your holidays with your family.
Thanks, Tammy. Mike mentioned the CCC party, and I was not able to attend because I mentor a high school group of kids called YEP, which is Youth Engaged in Philanthropy. But I wanted to give a shout out to Jim Wood because he donated ice skating tickets to every member of the CCC that that was in their stockings. So that was pretty cool. And then he also came to our YEP ceremony. He was headed south, and he stopped by and talked to all the kids on his way out of town. So just a shout out to him for being involved in our community. The employee breakfast was always, was fun as usual. You mentioned the museum volunteers, so we did that. We had an executive meeting for REDAC, called a special meeting because November was canceled because trying to get a quorum over the Thanksgiving holiday didn't work out, so we approved some loans for that. And one thing that is coming up fairly soon for little kids is kindergarten through fourth grade is hot shots basketball. So if you haven't signed your littles up, sign them up. My friend Janet, who coaches at Fortuna High Basketball, and myself are teaming up with some other volunteers, and we're going to do a hot shot skills and drills. So if you have signed your child up for hot shots, it's free. It'll be on Sundays, starting on Sunday, so the 22nd, and from 10:00 to 10:45 is kindergarten through second, and from 11:00 to 11:45 are third and fourth. So it's a great chance for your kids to come out and have a fun time, learn some skills and drills before they actually start playing their little games, because you don't have a lot of time to practice when the games start. And it's just really fun to see them improve, and we have a good time doing it, so sign up your kids and come out on Sunday. And I think that's it. So if anyone wants to entertain a motion?
Question to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All on paper?
Aye.
Aye. All righty.